Do you have your good?
Yep.
All right. I'd like to call to order the October 30th, 2020-23 West Bridgewater School Committee meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Alrighty. The listing of matters on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may be in fact discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being shown live on cable and livestreamed on the West Bridgewater Community Access Media website, vw-cam.org. A recording of this meeting will also be available on vw-cam.org. I'd like to introduce our student representative, Ally Bassett, to our meeting this evening. Welcome, Ally.
Thank you.
All right. First up is the approval of the meeting minutes from both September 11th and October 2nd, 2023 school committee meetings. Is there a motion to approve the September 11th and October 2nd meeting minutes as presented?
I move to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion? You guys good? Okay. So moved.
All right. So first update is the MSBA update. So just letting everyone know that the special town meeting on October 16th, that the feasibility study did pass. Gary Keith, our Chair of the Committee, presented the motion and read a prepared statement for feasibility and schematic design, and answered several questions from the public. Thought he did a wonderful job really laying out the whole process as we move forward, knowing that we don't have a lot of answers at this time. And it's really to discover information through the feasibility and schematic design phase. It passed with an approval rating of 84%, which is wonderful. So thank you to the residents of West Bridgewater for their continued support. Gary and I were on a call with the MSBA on Friday, inquiring about some next steps. And we want to try to move as quickly as we can, but there are some things that we have to do, and the MSBA has to get to us prior to that. They're going to certify the enrollment. They're going to send us a feasibility study agreement, which we will review, sign, and return to them. And then the goal is to be invited to the board meeting on December 13th. Then that's where they will hopefully affirm the feasibility study agreement. After that, we'll have some training on the next steps in terms of hiring the OPM and the designer for the project. So it's kind of like a hurry up and wait. We did finish this part of the process a little bit earlier. We had until November 27th. So I think it was good that we got everything done. We've got our committee on hold and a subcommittee on hold that will work on the OPM first, and then we'll look at the designer. So more information and more training to come, and we just remind people that all the information is posted out on our website. I also wanted to follow up about our meeting we had with the town to talk budget. We felt it was very important to make sure we are informing the town and the town boards of where we stand with our FY '24 budget and looking forward to FY '25. You'll see listed there the people who attended the meeting. Again, we had great school committee, school building, excuse me, school department, and then town representation at that meeting. We went through a lot of items, and there was great discussion back and forth. And we're looking forward to hopefully holding another meeting sometime this winter, prior to meeting with them in March. But a very good collaborative effort, I felt.
Did you feel like there was any immediate concerns that anyone had? Was it more just like trying to help people understand?
I think we have a long way to go to helping other parts of the town understand what the school department needs. And I think this is a part of that process. So we get to have this discussion with them where they can ask more questions than they normally would during a budget presentation. So we can start to give them that view of what our school department should be and what areas we need some growth in, and why we're asking for more in any particular budget year.
And we've been hopefully as transparent as possible in terms of what our needs are. And they really aren't wants, but their needs within the district. Our message really hasn't changed over the past few years of where those needs are and how we're hoping to address them through the budget and through other resources. So I felt it was very productive and hopefully informative for them.
Right.
So what I would like to do, term is superintendent in residence or residency, but this is not an original thought of the superintendents have done this. It is my goal to get into the buildings and spend extended periods of time. Unfortunately, I live at the Spring Street School, so I am kind of in residence there on a daily basis. I get to see them arrive at dismissals. I get to see them at lunch. I get to be in the classrooms. But I'm really interested in being in the other buildings more than just a simple walk through amount of time. So in the past, I've done shadow days where I followed a particular student throughout the day. I did that a couple of years ago. I found it very helpful and very informative. This, in this case, what I would like to do is spend two consecutive days in the schools. I'm going to start that tomorrow here at the middle senior high school. I thought it's perfect because it is Halloween, and I can then follow our seniors as they parade around the rest of the schools. My goal is to be around, to be visible, but also just to kind of take in everything that's going on. A lot is going on in our schools every single day. So I'm excited to do it. I'm excited to spend that time. And then hopefully after day one, I kind of blend in a little bit more. But I want to learn more about the curriculum, the culture, and the learning atmosphere. My goal is to be in the other buildings before the Christmas December break. So I think it'll help me be better informed as we move forward, budget and other things. So looking forward to it.
You're going to participate?
Yeah. I don't know if I'll do gym. I mean, I'm trying to run up and down the kindergarten is enough, but I definitely will go to lunches. I love that. And at the elementary level, going out for recess and things like that, a lot of fun. Maybe I'll do some hall bathroom duty. I don't know. That might feel much, but. We do have upcoming parent teacher conferences. We same practice as we've had before with Friday, November 17th will be pre-K to grade eight. And then Monday and Tuesday, November 20th and 21st. All of these will be half days of school up and for the up to the eighth grade on Friday. And then the rest of the district, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, conferences will be in person. And each of the individual principals will be sending out more information on how people can sign up for conferences. We hope people do come. It's a great opportunity for the parents to hear from the teacher, sit down with them for a few minutes and talk about their child. That's our goal. Multilingual family night. I'd love to invite up Erica Cashman, right up there, please. She took some wonderful pictures. I'll do my best to go through them. And she's just going to talk about Erica's, our new ELE coordinator, and has started out already doing a great job. She developed, she delivered some professional development last month, and has been doing a great job. So welcome.
So, good evening. My name is Erica Cashman, and I came to West Bridgewater from the Fall River Public Schools. I've been one of the ESL teachers here since December of 2021. And two weeks ago, I did take over as the ELE or ML coordinator for the district upon Mary Pistorino's retirement. Mr. Bodwell asked me to speak tonight to share some details of a recent event that we hosted for our ML students and their families. This was the third family engagement event that we've had within the last year and a half, and we're already looking forward to planning one for the spring. As a matter of fact, ML family engagement will be a constant priority as we continue to move forward, and it will take on many different forms. Last Thursday, we hosted the Fall Multilingual Family Dinner. This was a true collaborative effort from the initial planning to the final moments of cleanup. It took place here in the cafeteria and was very well attended. Each school was represented, I'm sorry, represented, and even three former West Bridgewater students came along with their younger siblings. So that was nice. I did some percentages today. About 55% of our active ELs and their families came. So it was well over, it was somewhere between, I would say the final count was somewhere around 60 people. But that was about 25 of our active EL students, and we have a total of 46 active EL students. So it was really well attended, which was exciting. So we started at five, and as families entered, they were greeted and encouraged to take fun family photos, which you can see a couple of those up there. For approximately 30 minutes, they went on to visit different tables and stations. We had the West Bridgewater Public Library talking about what they offer. They also signed up a combined total of 10 children and adults for new library cards. So that was great. The Children's Museum in Eastham was in attendance. They shared information about different programs that they offer. And the museum provided some fun crafting and brought along this big giant wind machine that they have. The kids love it. There was face painting and pumpkin decorating. At about 6:00 PM, a specifically designed and delicious menu of chicken with rice and beans, rolled salad. It was all served by Amory Grinder and her team. And the families mangled as they ate, and the energy in the cafeteria was very warm and welcoming. Looking around, it was obvious that our families felt comfortable, and they were enjoying themselves. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So those were the fun family photos. So I'm not sure what happened, but that's okay. So, yeah. Yeah. So here we have the presenter, yeah, the tables. Okay. Thank you. So before wrapping up the night, we shared a presentation with parents, and we gave an explicit demonstration of how they can navigate the West Bridgewater Public Schools' ML webpage and the amount of information that they can actually find on it. The librarian spoke directly to them about some of their programs, but they highlighted an online English language learning program called Mango, which many of the parents are interested in. I've had parents speak to me about wanting to learn English themselves, and so this was something that was highlighted for them. And it's free. Amory Grinder and one of our employees, Indira Baptista, who's also a parent of three students in West Bridgewater, one of them is an ML. They addressed the parents to educate them about an initiative coming, which will bring more culturally diverse food to the menus of the public schools, and basically are looking to recruit parents to help design recipes for that. So that's great. That's some sort of a grant that that went through. Mary Winhee, who is, you may know her, she's the Chair of the Open Space and Recreation Committee. She agreed to set up a table for families to visit and learn a little bit more about where they live. She shared really wonderful photos of the Riverwalk event, trail maps, more. She encouraged them to share their input by taking an important survey about what they'd like to see for recreation in West Bridgewater. So it's this, if you've seen it around town, with regard to parks, sports fields, conservation. And the data results from these surveys will inform the open space plan for the next seven years. And I guess it lines the town up for state and grant money to fulfill some of these ideas and projects. So we were happy that we were able to offer the multilingual families an opportunity to be a part of that process. Of course, we had interpreters join us. They were able to clarify and reiterate for the families, you know, who were in need. And then lastly, we raffled off over 20 different giveaways to the students. So it was a really great success. And just so you know, the hour and a half was jam-packed with fun activities that resulted in many smiling faces, sounds of joyous laughter. And as I'm sure you're aware, many multilingual and immigrant families face unique challenges as they settle into new communities. West Bridgewater has experienced an influx of new families that we deserve, we feel deserve to be welcomed and educated about the wonderful places and possibilities that exist in and around their home community. So the ML department, although small, is functioning as a strong, like-minded team of educators, and we're looking forward to continuously partnering with our students' families in order to boost achievement and promote equity. And we're grateful for those who have helped and will help us to do so in the future. And I just finally will share a message from a parent who texted me on Friday. And it just said, "Good morning, Mrs. Cashman. We are grateful for this welcome from the school. If you need anything, we're here to reciprocate this care. Have a wonderful weekend." And I thought that was really a nice way to end the week.
For a little bit and wandered around. And to your sentiment, the energy, everybody was highly engaged, and the kids were having a great time.
That's awesome.
Yeah. And that big wind machine was just really cool. Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you to you and your staff. You know, we hope to provide an inclusive environment for our kids, but also for our families. And it means a lot to them to feel welcome to West Bridgewater, and that's our goal. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I wanted to update the committee about a wonderful opportunity and happening for us. Mrs. Giannis came into my office, and she said, "I'm glad you're sitting down," with a piece of paper in her hand. I said, "Oh, no." She said, "Take a look at this." I said, "Oh, boy." And she showed me this, and it was, we received a grant that was a little bit unexpected. We, just some history behind the school behavioral health grant that we had applied for. Mrs. Giannis and Mrs. Dietrichson had worked on the grant back in February of last year. We were notified in the spring that we did not receive the grant. And then as of last week, due to an increase in state appropriation for school health services, West Bridgewater was awarded $100,000 in the grant. And we had put into the grant that'd be used for elementary school adjustment counselor and a part-time elementary school psychologist. So we've met on it. We've talked about it. We've, the administrative team have looked at, you know, different options of how we can do this. You know, I think honestly, one of our biggest concerns is going to be where they're going to be housed, because we have limited space. But we will solve that problem. We're excited. We started the process of posting for these positions. And when we met with the town, one of the things we talked about were, was, you know, mental health and behavioral health, especially at the elementary level. So we're very happy to have this grant. The goal or the hope is that it continues on next year and the year after, but there are no guarantees to that. So we will take this money. We will use it to hire high-quality staff for our district. It's going to service our kids and families and help our staff. Very excited, but I wanted to share it with the committee. All right. I'm going to have Mrs. Giannis come up. We're going to talk about some of our MCAS results. We're going to go through some of the scores, and then we're going to talk about next steps and where we go in terms of action steps to show FHR's improvement.
So when MCAS results came out, we met as an administrative team, and we looked at the data. That's okay. I was pretty eager before the release data was out. I was already looking at the data and making like inferences on what we, what I saw. And so when it was released, we all met together. Mark and I have met with the middle senior high school coordinators and the elementary ITLs to talk about the data. It was shared with all educators and administrators, and the staff reviewed all the data. And we met again with the math and science departments during CPT. And we also have scheduled follow-up meetings to meet with them to see how their action plans are going and to monitor the progress. So we'll start with some good news. Elementary school did fairly well. If you look at the graphs, the bars that are circled are the areas we need improvement in, and it'll be a consistent theme across all grade levels that our partially meeting students are higher than the state. So if we can get those partially meeting students over to the meeting category and then move those not meeting students, we'll be in a much better place. But the smiley faces are where we have done well. So in third grade, we did pretty well in ELA and math.
And his goal, like, just so I understand, is the four categories, so what they are?
The first category is up there is not meeting. Second category is partially meeting. And those two categories, we want to be better than the state. We want our bar to be lower than the state bar. And the other categories, meeting and exceeding, we want the bar to be higher. So as you can see, the partially meeting is higher, and we want that to be lower. And then grade four, it looks similar to grade three. Their partially meeting was just a hair over the state in math, which is good. And they had a lot of smiley faces. So their... Grade five looks pretty good across the board. Science, they did pretty good in science. Their not meeting was almost half of what the state was, which is good. And then their meeting was above the state.
So grade five, they did science, law, and math, so.
And grade five is tested on third, fourth, and fifth grade standards in, on the science MCAS. The fifth grade teachers have looked into that, and they have noticed that it's like a third, a third, and a third of, so the science has to build upon each year. Grade six actually did pretty well as well. Especially in math. Exceeding in math is almost equal to the state and as is in ELA. And grade seven, this is where we're starting to see a few more of the bars in not meaning and partially meaning go up. But seventh grade math did, their not meaning was better than the state. So that was good. Grade eight. They're... They're almost level with the state on a lot of things. Science, for some reason, I didn't separate that one. That one must have stayed the same. So I have not meeting and partially meeting clumped together, but the not mean, the partially meeting was higher than the state. And the meeting and exceeding are clumped together as well. And then grade 10, they have lower not meeting, but their partially meeting is higher than the state in ELA. Math, a lot higher. And then in science, it doesn't look like the state did that well either, but we did a little higher than the state in not meeting and partially meeting. But we were even with the state in meeting expectations. So the goal is to get those bars not meeting and partially meeting down below the state and the other two bars up. So how are we going to do that?
Getting that group, it's kind of hard to see the, you can't see the number of kids in the bar, but we know by the nature of, you know, our students who's in there. And this, you know, we're very confident we can move students from partially meeting to meeting and exceeding.
And some of them have only missed by a point or two. So it's, they're close. They're close to being meeting students.
This year compared to previous years?
It's about the same or a little lower. And the state was the same, too. The state, where we are, the state is seeing the same dips. They said to be careful of third grade this year, watch third grade, because that is the grade that came in during COVID. So they missed a lot of schools. So we'll keep a good eye on third grade this year. So after we saw the data, we put some action plans. We had asked the ITLs and the coordinators and the principals to really take a deep dive into that data. They had much more data than what was on the screen. We also use STAR assessments, and they mimic the MCAS data pretty well. And where we saw the dips in STAR, that's where the dips were in the MCAS data as well. So we're going to start using common assessments to monitor progress across the grade level. More MCAS practice questions and scoring. The Standards Navigator is all the standards in a grade level, and we had done this during COVID. We used priority standards during COVID, but when we did it during COVID, we had the teachers rate themselves red, green, or yellow. Red, meaning they, they think they could have taught the standard a little, little better, or they didn't get to it because of the circumstances during COVID. Yellow, they taught it, but could have been a little bit better. And green, they thought that they taught it solidly. So we're going to look at that again, just to see where the gaps are. We're going to look at our current PD, and we're going to modify it as needed. So we've already talked about looking at coaches for math, to hire someone to come in, an outside person to come in and look and, you know, take a deep dive into what we're, what we're doing and how we can better our teaching practices. We're using common planning time, the wind block, power block, the H block at the middle senior high school, and the seventh grade reading to all add support services to those kids that need a little more support to get them where they need to be. And one of, when, what came out of one of the meetings we had was someone, one of the teachers suggested, "Why don't we use the high school students as teaching assistants?" So the, you know, the students in high, the 12th grade come down and help out in the middle senior, the middle school and be teaching assistants. I think that'll help a lot, too.
And when we talk about user assessment, important, I think, because we can gauge where they're at, it's, it's hard. You'd spend a whole year teaching, and then you take assessments in the spring. You don't find out till next September. We want to assess them so we can monitor their progress and then make appropriate adjustments to practice what's going on in the class and maybe look to see what other skills they need to build up to be successful. And the same thing goes for some of, you know, the practice questions. It's, you know, for a third grader, even, you know, younger elementary kid, student to be taking tests, you know, it's, it's, they need to understand what they're doing to be proficient in it. So I think there are changes that we're making that are not just test-taking, but looking at where the skills are and adjusting the practice and adjusting the assistance that they may need.
When we do assess them, are they getting enough feedback to understand where they're making mistakes?
Because in a lot of areas, we're below the state, and we're better than that. In many years, we're above, but there are quite a few areas, especially at the middle senior high school level, that we're below. And I know our kid, we've got bright kids and motivated kids, and I know our staff is excellent and hardworking. And I know we come from a strong community. So we want to work together, and the goal is to be back above the state at all levels.
So do you think there was anything about the way that the test was administered in West Bridgewater that might have impacted performance?
I don't think so.
Anything happening around the time that we got to MCAS or anything?
No, I don't think so. I mean, that would have been great in some ways. There were, I, what I do think, and I've talked to administrators about this, I do think our kids in, like, school, they like coming to school, they, they work hard. I don't think they feel a lot of pressure, which in some ways is good, but we want them to perform well. So we want to support them, but also it's important that they, they do their best on these assessments. The kids, you know, like their classes, and they want to learn. So now we just want that to be shown on the test.
Because that's the first year they're, we're asking them to take a test where they're sitting and looking at the computer, trying to take a test. So if we can give them the opportunities to do those in... So if we can give them the opportunities to do those in little mini sample tests, then they'll be better at it.
And how long, how many minutes, like, sample tests do you anticipate?
I don't know. Not, I don't want to test them, we don't want to test them to, right. And then we don't want, you know, and, you know, if we get a couple tests and they're doing quite well, then we'll have to play it by ear and see where they are and pull out the students that need a little more support in areas or standards that they're, um, a little lower in. Um, I think that's, that's how we'll get them, where we need to get them is by that smaller group instruction, especially during win and um, the small groups in, at Roselle during literacy.
And I think making it authentic, so it's not separate, it's what they're doing anyhow. So you're giving them, you know, practice questions that are related to what they're learning. So it's, it's within the scope of their, you know, their classroom, what they're doing.
And the affirm assessment that we have, um, in written wisdom, looks like an MCAS question. They'll, they'll scroll between different texts, like on an MCAS question. And there'll be multiple choice, short answer, uh, short response. And the teachers are going to use that this year. So we'll have some data from that as well.
I know Mrs. Goulet is not able to be here tonight. Do you want to just go through that and then we can have the other principals talk? Yes.
So at Roselle, they're going to utilize the online assessment, like I just said, through written wisdom. Um, they're going to have additional MCAS-like questions to build familiarity, familiarity, I can't talk, and stamina. They're going to try to have students complete assessments online. They're going to have acronyms for math open response questions. I know when we, when I taught third grade, we had an acronym, we used acronyms when they opened, open, when they answered open response questions. Moving the geometry or unit earlier in the year. Um, in the math curriculum, it is at the end of the, all the units. So when they move that, it doesn't affect the, um, integrity of the program. So they'll move that up to earlier in the year. And they're going to use an intervention and enrichment blocks across, across the classrooms. We also have Title One at Roselle for the students that we have, um, determined that may need a little more support in math and, um, ELA. What was that? Title One is a, um, it's a federally funded program, um, that gives districts money to hire support staff. Um, some districts are district wide where anybody can have the Title One services. We're a targeted assistant district. So that means students have to, um, show need and we look at different data points to find the students that are struggling. And then it's fluid, they come in, we watch them, and then they can exit out of the program and we still keep an eye on them. So the goal is to get the support they need and to exit them out of the program. All right.
Keith, it was on that same page as me when I made the font that small. But one thing, uh, Mrs. Page and Mrs. Goulet and I work a lot together and, you know, have a lot of dialogue about how we can continue to improve everything at each school. And right now specifically MCAS scores. So one commitment is just overall being more data driven and sort of having the theme that if you, if we all know our students' data, that's one way we're culturally responsive because we know the student strengths and then we also know the areas that we really need to work with them. Um, so specifically at the Howard this year, I know I mentioned it before when we presented the school improvement plans, that the win block has shifted a little bit, so now it is home of junior's grouping. You should be able to talk to all the students, they're getting up and going to exactly what they need at that point. Building on strengths, but also targeting some of the deficits that we saw in the data. Um, once again, by being more data driven, we'd see that when you break down Howard's data, we're not that far behind the state in anything. So we're so close to moving it, so that's what that block really needs to be. Uh, using more CFAs, um, Mrs. Yanis talked about affirm, but making sure that we're aligning that with a data protocol district wide. So we can see, okay, there's our opportunity to move the students. This is what we missed and this is what we're doing really well. Uh, we are fortunate with our grant consultant. We have a district wide PD on writing, because when you see the most deficits that we have, it is in writing. Once again, only about 5% below, so we're there. Uh, and then, you know, we're going from, we always are practicing on standards and trying to do our best and assess our best and engage our students. But from, you know, not doing that much MCAS practice, so we're going to incorporate it a little bit more. We're always practicing for the test, but we can be a little bit more, um, purposeful and transparent about, you know, you practice for things in life and you do a little bit better, not overdoing it, but still practi- practicing some. So that's sort of the plan of action at Howard.
Oh, and you mentioned the, so we also have two consultants working with the district. We have one at Howard and one at Roselle. And Howard is, she's been great giving feedback to the teachers, coaching the teachers and giving feedback. Um, the same at Roselle. Um, so the teachers are getting that coaching just in time, coaching when they need it. Um, and the grants are pretty rigorous. There's a lot of expectations that are due from these grants, so the teachers have stepped up. Roselle, they're working on the small groupings. Um, and Howard, we're working on the written wisdom implementation.
And the last, the last thing would be, you know, leveraging the observations and tying it a lot more specifically to data. You know, it's just becoming a much more regular thing that we're doing and it's making a difference and we're talking about it.
Yep.
So talking about it's to get places started.
And the collegiality among grade level teams are, that's huge. Like, they're talking to one another and they're talking about students within that grade level. And if someone's struggling, someone might have an idea on how to help them. So, um, we go in the right direction.
Any questions? Yeah, go for it.
Some time feedback and the coaching, what, can you just give like a quick, I don't need to know something, just like what is, what a quick example be of something that someone might get from those coaches?
We had our learning walk with our grant consultant, Sade. And after, it's in a coaching observation, which is a different role than mine, not that principals don't coach, but if I'm coming in to do a formal observation, it's formal. So it's sort of, it bridges the gap between administration and that coach role. So if they come in to give you an observation, within 24 hours, the next day, they're coming back and giving you concrete feedback, what was great about it, but also, you know, consider trying this, did you notice that this student was X, Y, and Z? And that this would be a really good practice to engage this student and so actionable stuff.
That they could take right away and use and.
And you'll see it, because I went right in after and I said, oh, that's right from Sade.
Yeah, and it was, it was really powerful and impactful, I think, that the teachers were welcome to that feedback and they took it and they ran with it, so.
Observers, if he asks how they're receiving that feedback.
They're receptive.
Very, very receptive.
And happy, you get it, and, and not fighting it.
No, stopping me in the hallway to tell me, oh, Sade said I did this really good, but I could work on this. And just showing me what, um, some of the suggestions. And they went back and they used the suggestions, so, um, very good feedback and reception from the teachers.
Hello. Um, yeah, at the middle, senior high school, um, I can tell you, um, the staff is really passionate about bringing those scores up. Um, you know, we have a math teacher here tonight. Um, they, they want us to do well. They, um, you know, are empowered now because, you know, when they see the scores and, and it's funny, when you look at the MCAS item, uh, data analysis and you can see where certain students are missing the mark, um, sometimes it doesn't make sense, you know? So you point to, you know, on test day, you know? So, um, those are things, um, you know, pushing up maybe the rigor of taking the test. We don't want to stress kids out over test taking, but, um, you know, maybe they need to know the importance of it. Um, and more to, to that, um, that level of the, you know, you needed to graduate and, um, you know, you don't have to keep taking it again. Um, so I think that is important. Um, when we look at the data, um, analysis, we can see the gaps. Um, you know, and for the sophomores, um, honestly, fractions was a big one that we saw. So we said, oh, all right, we need to look back and see where maybe we're missing the mark in fractions. So, um, through common planning, um, and, uh, department meetings, the staff are looking to see and collaborate and making sure, you know, things are taught, but then re-taught and revisited. And, you know, prior knowledge is important to make sure that they're retaining that. Um, the H block with the grouping, we are gonna, um, group viability, um, you know, moving second, third, fourth term. We've done that in the past, you know, maybe a student who isn't as strong in math or ELA will take a, a second quarter of math or double up, take two quarters of the math um, in the plus and, and getting away more from the enrichment of the math in the H plus and the ELA and the reading and gearing it more towards MCAS. So our H block is, we have four, um, quarters. So each group, seventh and eighth grade, they'll take a quarter of math plus, we call it math plus, science plus, um, ELA plus, and in eighth grade, they take engineering because there is a component of engineering on the MCAS for the science. And in the seventh grade, they take a quarter of E, Spanish and French. So it's like an exploratory, so it's, it's like an extra. Um, so we found in the past that it has helped to, um, you know, see where the gaps are. If we have students that are really low in certain subjects, that we can have them take that class more than once. So it's just really giving them, you know, they have the full year course and then just extra, um, just to keep the repetition going. And we try to do it so that, um, it's every day. So if, if they're in math on the A, B, C, D day, then they'll have another math on H and, and so forth, or ELA or reading. Um, I'm just looking at the notes up here. Uh, high school power block, uh, grouping, we have some tutorials, um, prior to MCAS um, for those students who maybe need some extra, um, reminders, um, a little help um, in the, the courses, uh, before MCAS timing, like March is the ma, uh, the ELA, May is math, June is bio. Um, so prior to those, um, testing times coming up, maybe taking and doing some extra work with some kids, uh, in small group at the high school level. Um, and, and really just more really to build their confidence. Um, a lot of these students have the skills and then when it comes time sometimes to test, um, some, some just don't test well, you know? So really trying to build their confidence that they know the material, take their time. Um, we found, um, you know, to mimic, uh, what Rick said about the writing. Uh, the writing, um, we were shocked that the writing was as poor as it was on the MCAS because, um, we feel like, you know, we have amazing teachers, we have great students and, um, you know, it's just, it was, it was a good awakening to say, all right, we have to get a little bit back to, um, you know, MCAS. We don't want to be just MCAS-driven because we have so much to offer. And, um, so we, we, we got away from that a little bit. Um, but, you know, it's just a little, we have to just up it a little bit. And I, I'm so, I'm confident, um, I feel our staff is confident, um, that the score is going to go, that they're going to go in the other direction. Um, we know, and Mr. Bardwell said, um, we're better than, you know, state average for sure. The collaboration, I'm just trying to read these, um, embedding more of the MCAS questions and actually how they score. Um, so, you know, especially in the writing and the ELA, um, just little things, if they just add, um, the score would be very different. And, um, math teachers working with, um, a lot of it is some word problems we found in the data analysis. Um, you know, word problems, you need decoding, you know? So using our reading teacher to help, um, students with some of the word problems that, you know, hurt them in the math. So it was more the reading portion of the math. But we're confident that, um, you know, like I said, I, I feel like I'm being redundant. Um, because teachers do take it personal because they know. And I'm confident in our staff, we have amazing teachers, we have great kids. Um, and it's just together, we have to, you know, we all have to work together to bring the scores up. Um, we all, it's a team, it's not just one person, so. Does anybody have any questions?
I'm just thinking out loud, do you think that when you mentioned the reading and the, and the writing, those are activities where you take more of a pause, right, in the, in the, in test taking? Do you think that they're just trying to get through the exam?
Some, absolutely. Um, and it, and on the, on the, I mean, they're so used to taking. And it is different on a computer, you know? Um, it looks very different and, I mean, we've been doing it on computer for years now, but, um, when you, like, when you're writing, you, you know, it's not as easy to just look back. Um, so it, it is a skill to take and, um, yeah, I'm sure that is a part of it, just trying to get it done. Um, I know that, no, that's okay, the English teachers are working, um, as part of their PD to, um, creating more prompts for writing um, that are geared a little bit more towards like an MCAS question, um, just to get students going. Because again, and looking at the data, um, you know, we have some AP students who are in partially meeting, you know? So, um, you know, it just doesn't make sense. So, um, yeah, I think trying to really talk about how it scored, um, you know, what you really need to do. You really, really need to make it five paragraphs, you really need to, you know, little things I think are going to make a big difference.
I was just thinking, just in my own house, you know, when we were preparing for MCAS day, it's, don't worry about it. You know, we, we try to make it light and breezy and not even really talk about it, right? All right, now you need to go to bed, you need to get a good night's, but, um, you know, it's been more of a passive kind of a, a thing and, and at least in our household. And I'm thinking on the flip side, you know, when they come to school, are they just thinking, I don't know, I'm just trying to put myself in a fourteen-year-old brain. I just need to pass, doesn't really matter what I get, it's the score, I just need to pass, I don't know. You know better, I don't know.
You know, for grade 10, they know it, um, you know, will mean, do they get a diploma or do they get a letter of attendance? You know, so for grade 10, it's more high stakes. Uh, for middle school, yeah, some just may not think it matters. Um, and that's where we try to help them, um, you know, and there is, uh, it, you know, if someone's absent that day or if somebody doesn't take it, it goes in, I believe as a zero. So that goes against you right away if somebody doesn't take the test. So, yeah, I think there's a lot to factor in, but I'm sure part of it is, you know, um, there are families that, um, maybe you don't want to put the pressure on the student, you know? And we have been really, you know, as a district, really trying to, which I think is important, the SEL piece, you know? And you don't want to stress students out, they have enough stress at home with, you know, economics and, and everything going on. But, yeah, I wish I had a magic answer.
Thank you to Mrs. Yanis and the administrators. I think we want to balance the stress. We're doing well. Um, we have confidence in our students, in our staff. Uh, we just want them to perform to the level that they should be at. And give them the skills that they can be successful. So I think it's, I think we don't see improvement without putting things on paper, without talking about them and not just talking about them in September, October, and then wait till next year or wait till the day before. But we continue to revisit these action plans and these ideas and these assessments and talk about it. And that's how you're going to see improvement, by keeping your eyes on the prize in terms of what we need to do. So, again, I share the confidence, um, and I share the, the area of room for improvement and I know we'll get there.
All right. We are going to move over to our student representative update. Ally Bassett is going to give us an update on the happenings of each school.
So for the Spring Street School, the preschool and kindergarten had a great time of the Fun Run. They want to give a huge thank you to superstar Sean for getting the kids excited for the race and to the PTO volunteers who worked on making the race successful. The kindergarten students took advantage of the beautiful weather and paraded outside in their Halloween costumes. There were definitely some creative costumes this year. They're all excited for the seniors to come down on Tuesday in their costumes as well. Uh, teachers will be reaching out to the, to schedule parent teacher conferences as well. Uh, for the Howard School, the month of October has been full of energy and excitement for the students. Zigzag Zack and the Fun Run team were on campus for their fundraising goals. Daily students watched videos in the CAF on the Fun Run theme of world changer and participated in CAF activities. The Fun Run was a big success and the students all earned multiple Dude Perfect swag, which were the, which they were very excited about. The school council and Little Leos are working collaboratively to organize future Thanksgiving and Christmas drives, as well as organizing a school-wide dance. Be on the lookout for flyers and posts. In addition, Little Leos is in production on a video for Cleanup Day to display how the Little Leos Club contributes to a healthy environment. On Friday, October 27th, the Howard, Howard School participated in their second assembly of the year. The theme was goals and was hosted by the school specialists and the grade five students. They did a great job and the student work displayed was. They did a great job and the student work displayed was impressive. Lastly, Ms. Nelson will be sending out emails to families in the upcoming weeks to schedule parent teacher conferences of the month of November. For the middle, senior high school, they're grateful for the DA's office who came and spoke to the students about the dangers of vaping. They hope it was an opportunity for them to gain important information, allowing them to make good decisions. The seniors are busy working with their counselors, getting prepared to submit their college applications for next year. The early action deadline is just around the corner. A big thank you to the BR robotics team and Liz Keller for donating robotics equipment. Ms. Brennan is eager to begin a robotics team and begin to compete with the other schools. Our advisory lesson for October was an SEL activity. Middle and high school students learned about what mental health is and isn't and things that they can have in their toolbox to help them during tough times. Middle school students ended by discussing positive affirmations and then went outside with the Wildcat leaders to write them around the building. The high school students brainstormed songs that make them think positively and added it to a Google form. Ms. Kay is making a playlist, which will play on Fridays in the cafeteria. Homecoming week is also a success with a lot of great creativity in the dress up days. The Prater Puff game was a lot of fun for everyone and a great fundraiser for the class of 2024. To wrap up the week, the homecoming dance was held on Saturday evening. All the students looked amazing and seemed to have a good time. Students are actively preparing for the Fall Musical, a junior version of Matilda, and the Fall Sports teams are wrapping up their seasons and looking forward to the playoffs. WB hosted their first unified bocce last week. WB played Pembroke and all the students had a lot of fun. And the WB cheerleaders competed at a competition at Durfee High School on Sunday, though the team did not qualify for regionals, they did an outstanding job.
Awesome.
Awesome. Thanks, Ellen.
Okay, moving on to Inclusion Matters.
The mission of Inclusion Matters as West Bridgewater Special Education Parent Advisory Council is to build inclusive schools and communities. We do this by supporting families of students with IEPs and 504s and including regular education parents by offering advice, advocacy within the school system and opportunities for education and community building through regular workshops and events for parents, guardians, and families. We also, we also hope you'll join us for one of our most important events of the year, Understanding the IEP, a workshop for parents and guardians. Christine Riley, owner and founder of Cape Cod Advocate, will be joining us to help caregivers read, understand, and contribute to their child's IEP. Christine has over 20 years of experience providing educational consultation and advocacy for children of all ages and disabilities in districts throughout Southern Massachusetts. This event will be held on November 7th at 6:30 in the middle, senior high school Learning Commons and via Zoom. On Friday, December 1st, we will be marking International Day of People with Disabilities with our annual Rock Your Socks Day in West Bridgewater schools. Students and staff are invited to support Inclusion Matters with a donation and wear extra funky or mismatched socks to celebrate how being different rocks. In the words of George Day, "Inclusion is not bringing people into what already exists, it is making a new space, a better space for everyone." For more information about Inclusion Matters and upcoming events, you can find us on Facebook at Inclusion Matters MA or by visiting our website at www.inclusionmattersma.com.
Just a point of clarification on the business, that the, it was approved that the elementary would go to standard face report card, but also trimesters. And I believe it was approved that there'd be K 1 to 6. It's really trimester grades, so report cards will only be up to grade 5. Grade 6 is maintaining their middle school quarterly report cards to keep it in line with a more middle school model, just in case people are, see one thing and report on another. We'll make sure it's cleaned up in the next year. I think I remember talking about it.
We talked about it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll, we'll clean up the type of it after. Thank you. No problem.
Okay. Now for policies to open, so I'm gonna move to open the following policies for review at the next school committee meeting on Monday, December 4th. FA, Facilities Development Goals. FCB, Retirement of Facilities. FF, Neeming of New Facilities. FFA, Memorials. JEB, Entrance Age. JF, School Admissions. JFABC, Admission of Transfer Students. JFABD, Homeless Students, Enrollment Rights and Services. JFABE, Educational Opportunities for Military Children. JFABF, Educational Opportunities for Children in Foster Care. And JFBB, School of Choice. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. So now we're gonna move on to the policies that we had previously opened. Tonight we have two motions. The first motion will be to move to adopt the following policies. BA, School Committee Operational Goal. BAA, Evaluation of School Committee Operational Procedures. BBA, School Committee Powers and Duties. BBAA, School Committee Member Authority. BE, School Committee Meetings. BEDA, Notification of School Committee Meetings. BEDD, Rules of Order. BEDF, Voting Method. IHB, Special Instruction Programs in Accommodations. IHBA, Programs for Students with Disabilities. And IHBA, Observations of Special Education Programs. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion?
Yes, so let's see here. So there's no edits, we're just adding sources on the following. BAA, Evaluation of School Committee Operation Procedures. BEDA, Notification of School Committee Meetings. BEDD, Rules of Order. BEDF, Voting Methods. So those are no edits, just adding sourcing. The following is no change to content, but some minor changes to verbiage and updating some pronouns. That is BA, School Committee Operation Goal. BBAA, School Committee Member Authority. And IHBA, Programs for Students with Disabilities. And we're moving on to the following, change to content. BBA, School Committee Powers and Duties. School Committee Function was changed just to be more concise. The specific responsibilities section was removed from this policy and we could create our own rules and responsibility documents with removed verbiage. Change to content also to BE, School Committee, School Committee Meetings. Removed the detail on scheduling. IHB, Special Instruction Programs in Accommodation. A paragraph, new paragraph was added, which states, "The committee will secure properly trained personnel to work with children with special needs. Since the financial committee, commitment necessary to meet the needs of all these children is extensive, the committee will make every effort to obtain financial assistance." And last, changes to content to IHBA, Observations of Special Education Programs. Kathy Marbo was consulted as the revised MASC policy, altered the response timeframe for parents and guardians observations and also initial scheduling conversationalists. So it's changed from 10 days to five days. Any other further discussion on these changes?
No, I'm just gonna add, thank you Kathy. I know we, we had reached out to you to talk about whether or not changing the, the SLA and the timeframes that we would have to reply and, and start the clocks would, would be, you know, would kind of put us in a, put us back and you were great and said that it was fine, so.
All right, anything else? Right. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Warrants. Oh, actually, sorry, can you go back one second?
Sure.
I'm sorry, we did, we had one more. We had a second motion. Yep. We had a second motion. We're going to make a motion to continue to hold over Policy ADF, which was the school wellness program. We know, we've been working with you, Mr. Bodwell, and, and you've been working with your team to create, you created a very comprehensive document and we're gonna take a little bit more time to keep crafting that.
Perfect. Yeah, I think that makes perfect sense.
Okay. All righty, so I'm gonna make a motion to continue to hold Policy ADF. Is there a second?
Second.
Anything else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
So moving on to October payroll warrants. The following warrants were issued and paid out for the fiscal year of 2024. Bill warrants, we have October 5th, 2023 of 119,000, 100, I'm sorry, 632,095 cents. October 12th, 2023, 79,894,097 cents. October 19th, 2023, 136,299,96 dollars, sorry. October 26th, 2023, 84,1743,97 cents. And then we have two payroll warrants for October, October 13th, 2023, 571,051,88 cents. And on October 27th, 2023, 595,021,98 cents. And as, as always, all warrants are public records and once signed and are available in the selectives office at the town hall for review.
All righty, moving on to public comment. Members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personnel issues or issues that would violate student and/or employee confidentiality cannot be addressed during public comment. All righty, I don't see anyone. Okay, for upcoming events, we are getting into a very busy time of year and there's a lot of upcoming events. So mostly notably those for the district wide, half days and parent, parent guardian conferences. Friday, November 17th, there's a half day, parent guardian conferences for grades pre-K to 8. Monday and Tuesday, November 20th and 21st, there's a half day, parent guardian conferences for all grades. Wednesday, November 22nd, there's a half day for all grades. No school Friday, November 10th, an observance of Veterans Day. Thursday and Friday, November 23rd and 24th, and we are, we have no school in observance of Thanksgiving. For district wide meetings, there's the superintendent morning meeting Friday, November 17th at 9:15, the PTO on Wednesday, November 1st at 7:00 PM at the Roselle McDonald, and the athletic boosters meeting Wednesday, November 8th at 7:00 PM in the middle, senior, high school Learning Commons. There is also, for events pertaining to the particular schools, as we move into November, I would urge everyone just to watch for the communications regarding additional details for the events and meetings from our principals and superintendent communications, our district wide website and our West Bridgewater app. And we can go to the next one. Our next regular school committee meeting is on December 4th at 6:00 PM at the West Bridgewater Middle Senior High School Learning Commons. All right, can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Have a great night, everyone.